Have a quick, uh, Lisa, why don't you just, uh, go down to roll and ask if, uh, present or not, just for the record.
Jay?
I'm here.
Jimmy?
Here.
Robert?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Okay.
I didn't hear you. Lisa, you're, 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 you're pretty distant to here, Lisa.
What about now?
That's a little better. Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and jump right into it. We're here to discuss, uh, reopening of certain city facilities, uh, during this COVID-19 pandemic, uh, and the current, uh, state guidelines, state rules that are in order and the, and the city rules. Uh, I trust that all of you have seen the mayor's recommendations on reopening. And I think we can probably narrow the discussion, uh, quite a bit to just maybe a, to maybe a few key points. And so what we will hope to arrive at would be a resolution that we could adopt. And that resolution could look like we can adopt all of the, uh, mayor's plan or part of it and our bits and pieces of it. So if y'all will, if y'all will allow me, uh, I'm just gonna give my opinion what I think probably are gonna be simple points that we probably don't need to debate, that we could probably all agree with. Then I'll get to, uh, two or three points that we probably wanna discuss further.
I have no problem, Kevin.
Is that okay with everyone?
Sounds good.
Yeah, that's, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, uh, in terms of things like opening up the city hall, uh, the drive-up window and when the lobby's gonna be open and when public works is gonna be open and the, and recycling and when people can take their recycling to, uh, the public works facility, uh, the Knicks Center, the, uh, Recreation Center, the, um, Museum of History, all of those facilities, uh, I, I agreed with all of the mayor's recommendations and I didn't have any issues, uh, with any of that. Does anybody have a, a difference and wanna talk about points, uh, related to any of those openings? Uh, let me see, I left out the pool. The pool would be included in that. Um, so that basically leaves us with, uh, the Coyle Creek, and I'm gonna touch on that in a minute, park, the parks, uh, the ball fields, uh, the tennis center. And I believe I can go ahead and say on the tennis center, uh, if I'm not mistaken, they, their recommendation was to, uh, open that on Monday, uh, as opposed to Saturday. Um, and I didn't have a problem with that. I didn't have a problem with that either. It, it could be Saturday or Monday to me. I think that was just to give some, the staff, uh, some ability to react to that. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so i- in terms of the Coyle Creek, uh, there were some, there were some phasing of that, but we've already passed a resolution specifically related to the golf course. So I don't think that we have to put in this resolution any actions related to Coyle Creek. Uh, I just wanna note that we've, we've had, we have it opening at 7:00 AM Saturday morning. We have an opening to members and the public, and we do have an opening to riders and walkers. The, the mayor's recommendations and it, and it may have been that they put these together prior to our meeting Monday and it had said walkers only, but we specifically passed, uh, that riders would be allowed. And that's subject to social distancing, one rider per card. And I know that, uh, the staff at Coyle Creek and Ms. Mazer has come up with a host of, uh, of, uh, social distancing measures for the golf course, which, uh, I think are, are, it should be enacted. But I just kinda wanna get on the record saying that the, the council's resolution takes precedence over the, over these recommendations and, and we don't, I don't think we need to consider that now. Just, can I get agreement on that?
Yeah.
Agree?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that leaves us with a couple of things. Um, the north, the North Beach Park, uh, would be opened up. And I think that everybody's in agreement that, and well, let me ask you this first of all. Are we all in agreement that North Beach Park and the pier will open on Saturday? Is there anybody opposed to that? If so, could you speak up? Okay, I don't, I don't hear anybody opposed. I'm gonna take that as an affirmative that we're okay with that opening up on Saturday morning as well. Now, I know that the mayor's proposing to limit the access to the park to Fairhope, uh, residents only. And I, I think that there, I, I know that for one, I, I can say that I'm opposed to that idea because, you know, I, I, she, she asked for money to, uh, market the city on, you know, Monday night. And I think that there's several issues with, with, with not allowing others to enter. Uh, first of all, we wanna be friendly to visitors as our businesses are opening, as our retail stores are opening back up. So I think we need to be inviting. And secondly, we probably have a lot of people that moved into the city that don't have a, uh, an ID that shows they, they live in Fairhope. A driver's, I think that I read a driver's license be required. And, you know, if you just moved here, you're not gonna have one. And it creates a, a heartache for the person, uh, monitoring the gates. And I think that if we should monitor and if it becomes a problem, we can always come back and say we're gonna block it off to, 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 to only Fairhope residents. But in the meantime, I think we should open it up for everybody and give the message that Fairhope is, you know, our retail outlets are open, uh, with the exception of restaurants who only can have curbside pickup and takeout. But that, you know, our downtown, uh, is, those retailers that wish to open are open. Uh, so I wanna hear your comments on that. Uh, and we can just go down the line and, uh, if somebody wants to comment on that, you can say no, you can give comments or say no comments. So Jay, I'll start with you.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that. Uh, I mean, I think if we're opening for business, we, you know, we maybe don't wanna encourage people to come, but be, definitely be open and have everything available for them to come. And, and if they're, if they can come to the pier, then we wanna encourage them to come to our shops and, and, you know, support our local business in whatever way we can.
Jimmy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that as well.
Okay. Robert?
I'm fine.
Kevin?
Well, in my opinion, basically, we need to get this town back open. This to me is a fine way to do it with, uh, everybody coming in. And I feel it should be open to the public and to the tourists that come here.
All right. So Clark, if you'll make a note of that, I think that then the, in the, uh, the reopening should include when the North Beach Park open to, open to everyone. Open to the public, yes, open to everyone.
But that still would have to, have to comply with, uh, and Lisa, this is Jay, still have to comply with the minimum ten, social distancing, all of those requirements, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, good point. Yeah, a- all of this is, all of this is still, we have to, we have to open and be compliant with the, uh, state orders because those are still in place. Uh, and you could say that in the resolution, uh, Lisa, the, and Marcus, if you're taking notes. So, uh, I, I would also say that, you know, and I think that they're already planning on doing this, is that the playground equipment in that North Beach Park area would be fenced off or taped off so that the playground equipment cannot be used. So that, that brings us to the, the playgrounds. And I think that we would all be in favor of opening up our parks. But I do have a little bit of a, I have a little bit of heartache with opening up Fairhopers Park because I don't know how you open that park up and then not let anybody use the playground equipment because it predominantly is playground equipment. It may be easier to keep that closed as opposed to opening it because, you know, all you're left with is some benches and some pedestrians walking through there if we're not gonna let people use the playground equipment. And I believe that the playground equipment is just, just supposed to be off limits due to state orders right now. So thought, uh, let's, let's go down the line again. Jay, thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's probably right. Uh, you know, I, I don't know of the directors and since I hadn't had the opportunity to speak with them, I don't know if they had a plan for, for, for figuring out a way to barricade those, that playground equipment off. I, I'm definitely willing to, to give it a shot if they have a plan to keep it roped off. Um, I just hadn't heard what that plan is, and so I'm, I'm not sure. Um, you know, there is a large amount of green space at Fairhopers Park that people can kinda run and play on outside of the playground. And so I, I'm guessing what they, what they would do is maybe police tape that off. I'd, I doubt, I think it's too big of a space to barricade. Um, but, but assuming that there's some, you know, reason, reasonable plan in place to be able to rope that off, I'd be willing to consider opening it.
Okay. Thanks, Jay. Jimmy?
I, I've kinda got the same feelings with Jay about the, uh, Fairhopers Park, the Fells Park. I don't know how we could really do, uh, I don't know how you could open that one 'cause it's nothing but playground equipment pretty much. But, but like Jay said, Fairhopers Park does have a pretty substantial green space. I mean, if I was a parent, I wouldn't wanna take my kids and tell them that they can't get any of the equipment. But there may be some kids that just need a place to run around for a little bit, so I'd be all right with that with proper plan in place.
Jay? Kevin?
Uh, actually, I agree with Robert. I, I'm in favor of opening it if they do have a thing in pla- in place for the kids to stay off, uh, the playground equipment, give them enough room to play in the green space.
Yeah, yeah. I, I just, I, I've, I've been told by somebody at the city that they're gonna use construction fencing around, um, around the playground equipment. So that, so that should help. I mean, that should keep, you know, that should keep the majority of people away from the playground equipment. Will it keep everybody away? No. But neither does the locked gate, so.
Yeah. And Robert, I skipped you. Sorry about that. Do you wanna?
That's all right. Everybody, everybody probably knows where I stand. I'm, I'm the only one, the one to have arse and crass. I say open everything back up, let the people decide where they wanna go.
Okay. So, hey, Lisa, uh, for the record, what I heard was, uh, I heard the ma- I heard the majority of council, the vast majority say to open up Fairhopers Park, but, uh, cordon off the playground equipment. Um, Jimmy was the only one, and, and I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that suggestion, so that would be unanimous. Uh, I also, uh, only heard one person speak of, to, uh, to Fells Park, uh, which is a toddler park. So do we, we need to, do we need to get specific on that or, or do the same thing, try to just tape it off? Rock it off? I, I don't know. Can, can I get a little more feedback on that?
Yeah.
Before, before we give any, Jay, if you don't mind, before we give any feedback on that, uh, I drove by yesterday and there was two parents and a kid playing on that park on Fells. So as he, as people become more comfortable, taking their own health at risk and their loved ones at risk and however else you wanna approach it, what if somebody does go in Fells Park? What, what action are we gonna ask the police or whoever to take on those people that wanna go on that playground equipment? You gonna arrest them? You gonna find them? What, what are we, what's the city gonna do?
I, 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 I'm thinking that it, it, I believe it's a violation of the state orders, but I believe the police would, if I know our police, I think that they would probably, they would probably just ask them respectfully to refrain from it is what they would do. Okay. Jay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, no. I, I, you know, I, I've got a similar thought, uh, as to Jimmy, is I'm not sure how you blocked that off. But, but again, without having discussed it with the directors and knowing exactly what their plan is to, to keep some part of it open, I'm willing to give them the autonomy to give it a shot. And then if we have issues with it, then we can address it later.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Kevin?
I'm good with that.
Okay, so, so no specific instructions on that. It just falls under the state orders then.
That's right.
Okay. Uh, let's see, what am I, what am I leaving out, guys? Um, I believe that, I believe we may have covered, Lisa, are we leaving anything out? I think that may have covered it. Those were the, the few talking points that we had. Like I said, most, most of it, I believe we were in, in agreement with all of it. So, uh.
What about the dog park? Is anything, too, on park?
Yeah.
The dog park? Yeah, well, yeah, what was that recommendation? Was that Saturday as well?
Mm-hmm.
I, I believe that I was fine with that, uh, recommendations given for the dog park.
Okay.
Same here.
Anybody else have a strong opinion, one way or the other, on the dog park?
Dog lives matter.
Uh, uh, somebody take the coffee away from Robert. All right. So, um, Lisa, oh, oh, ball, ball fields. Um, I believe this, the, uh, is there anybody that had a difference, uh, in the sports fields? Um, ball field's open for practice, phase three is, phase three comes later. Ball field's open for practices, resume games per the state guidelines in phase three. Trying to look at what they are in phase one and two right now.
Phase two, they would, well, I think according to that, according to the mayor's plan, the ball field's open on, uh, uh, Saturday and it would revert back to what we had originally said back in March, which is that they're open but to small groups, nobody more than ten, six feet apart.
Okay. So would that be just adopt the recommendations per the, per the mayor's proposal?
That's right. And again, I think that, I think the mayor's proposal is just reverting back to what we had decided back at the March meeting, at least as far as the ball fields are concerned.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Marcus, have you got a resolution drawn up for us there?
Uh, I don't know that I've got everything all together. I was gonna hope and pull up with Lisa. Um, hang on just a second.
Do you guys wanna huddle up for a few minutes? Well, I guess you're not together, so you can't, so.
We're not, we're, we're not. That's one of the, for the problems. I mean, we get, we get, uh, Lisa, can we just do a blanket adoption of what we've already?
Well, let me take a stab at it. Uh, a resolution stating that, you know, the, the governing body of the city of Fairhope, uh, accepts the recommendations of the mayor, uh, with the following exceptions. Uh, the Coyle Creek Golf Course will reopen on Saturday at 7:00 AM per the resolution adopted, uh, by the council on Monday, uh, whatever Monday's date was. And the, the, the North Beach Park would reopen to the public. Uh, I also think that we need to say that there's gonna be no charge right now because typically we charge for non-residents. Uh, I think we should suspend with the charging. We don't want the gatekeeper to be handling cash. Can we agree to that?
I still think we oughta charge for non-residents just like we normally would.
Yeah, you can do, you could do like they do on the toll bridge right now. They're only taking credit card payment. They're not taking cash.
Well, somebody drives over and they don't have any, well, they, they don't have a credit card. All they have is cash. I, I don't know. It's, uh, I didn't think we wanted that hand-to-hand contact, you know? I think we're only talking about for about two and a half weeks. I don't know how much revenue that's gonna cost the city. Probably not very much. I, I think it's a trade-off for the, the safety and welfare of the, of the, of the gatekeeper versus, uh, you know, a few dollars.
I'm fine with, with not charging.
I, I am, I can live with that.
I think we could probably, I think we could probably live without the $500 that we would make maximum in revenue.
My, my vote would be charged, but credit card only.
Are they set up for credit cards down there? Do we know?
You still have to do hand-to-hand to get their credit card from them.
Correct. Uh, Kevin, do you have an opinion?
Like, yeah, my opinion is I don't, I, you know, I don't handle money at all and I'm not much on it unless somebody handles my credit card. So, you know, I'm for no charge.
If, uh, hey, Jay, I, I'm hearing a majority say no charge. I mean, and I just, I want every, I'd like to be unanimous on the resolution. If we put that in there, are you okay with that?
Uh, I mean.
I don't, this is Lisa. I don't know if we're set up for credit card down there.
Okay, well, if we're not set up for credit card, then that takes that out as an option. All right, yeah, well, well, let me say this. I definitely don't agree with taking cash payment at this point in time and handling cash. So if we're not set up for credit card, then no charge.
Okay. All right. Uh, what other points? Uh, the, uh,
just wanna emphasize, this is Kevin again. I wanna emphasize that, you know, everybody, you know, this is up, again, this is up to the people to decide how long this is gonna stay and remain open as long as we do the right thing and stay within the, uh, limits of the, uh, distancing and social distancing or what the governor's putting in place for us. We need to be real conscious of that when we start opening up the stores, 'cause we really need to open up these stores. And, yeah, I'm, I'm talking to Robert, he's, he's beating, uh, I'm kinda leaning toward him that we still need to open up this town. And, uh, as long as the people do what they're supposed to do, we'll be okay with it. I don't know how you put that in the, uh, minutes. I mean, in the, uh.
Well, I think that it just means that, I think what's, what you're stating is that, you know, i- i- if things could change if people aren't abiding by the social distancing, we, you know, we reserve the right to change and hoping we don't have to reverse course. But that's always, you know, we always have that option if people aren't abiding by it. You know, for instance, if the pier gets so crowded you can't properly social distance, then, you know, that might be up for discussion. Uh, things, things such as that, I believe. Okay, was there any, uh, what other, what other points do we have to put in there? Do we need to?
Opening the points.
What's that, Lisa?
You, you mentioned the points that were open before.
Some of the ball fields.
No, but I think we were just talking about playground parks and stuff, and you said make sure that they were roped off like they were talking about.
Right. So I guess that we would allow them to, I guess that we would allow them to open, uh, subject to, um, closing off the, you know, preventing the use of the playground equipment. Okay. Anything else, Lisa?
No, that, those were the points.
Okay. Any, uh, council, are there any other, um, finer points that I'm leaving out?
Nope.
Okay. So, uh, Lisa or Marcus, can you take a stab at now putting that back, back in the words? And I'm sorry, I can't write because I'm riding in a car right now.
Be resolved by the governing body of the city of Fairhope that the, uh, that the city council hereby adopts the recommendations set forth by the mayor of the city of Fairhope with the exception of, and you're gonna have to work with me here, uh, golf courses to remain, uh, open as per instructions set forth on Monday, um, April 27th. Was that the date, Lisa? Two thousand, and, um, the, uh, the playground parks, uh, downtown are to remain open with the exception of the playground equipment, which is to be roped off or cordoned off by city officials. Uh, the North Beach, uh, park shall remain open or shall be open on, what date is this? Are we doing this on Saturday? Is that right?
Correct. May 2nd.
Shall open on, on Saturday, May 2nd, 7:00 AM. Uh, there should be no toll, toll restrictions on the park. Uh, and all playground equipment shall be cordoned off by city officials according to the governor's orders. Uh, all social distancing measures shall remain in place, uh, as per orders of the, uh, governor. Um, was there a dog park issue? Was that in the mayor's, um?
No, I think it's per, per, per her recommendations, per the mayor's. But dog park, tennis center, all per the mayor's recommendations.
Yeah. Ballpark, ball, ballpark shall, uh, revert back to the, uh, pre-closure status with, um, the, the mandate set forth by the governor regarding, um, social distancing protocols remain in place.
All right.
Was there anything else?
Yeah, there's one point, and if somebody else wanted to say something, I, I heard him right before you, uh, started. But, you know, one of the points in the mayor's recommendations, I believe I read that, that the North Beach Park would only be open to foot traffic. And I believe that we're, what I'm hearing is we want it open to all tra- it's gonna be open to pedestrian and vehicular traffic. Uh, am I correct, council? Are you okay with opening it to pedestrian and vehicular traffic?
I, I am. I thought, I thought her recommendation said foot and vehicular traffic, but that, so I think, I think she's got that in there.
And, and I thought I read something that said that it was gonna be closed to, to vehicular. But anyway, but let, let's, let's, to, to give it clarity, let's, let's put it in the resolution so that, so there's, there's no, no ambiguity about that.
Okay, amend the resolution to add that, uh, the North Beach should be open to vehicular and foot traffic, uh, with a restriction set forth on the playground. Playground has to be closed.
Correct. Correct.
Right.
All right. Now, who had some, somebody was trying to say something right before, uh, Marcus read that resolution. Who was that?
It was me. I didn't put the, in there. North Beach and pier. Pier.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Let's make, make sure that, that it is specifically stated that the pier is opening, uh, the pier and the Rose Garden area and the, uh, the traffic circle and all that is gonna be opened on Saturday morning.
I amend it as such.
Okay.
Okay. Does somebody want to make the motion to adopt the resolution, uh, read, uh, by Marcus and then with the, uh, couple of amendments that were just made?
Kevin makes the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay. Uh, hearing no further discussion, uh, all those in favor, Lisa, if you'll call, roll call, please.
Council president?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Um, I do not believe there should be any more business. Is there any other business related to the COVID-19 pandemic that we need to consider at this time?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Okay?
Jack?
Who was that?
That's, uh, Councilman Brown here.
Okay.
I was, uh, I was approached by an individual yesterday, uh, who has a, a Fairhope high school senior. And she was looking to do, uh, some kind of parade because graduation at this point has been called off. There were, there's no ceremony planned, uh, certainly not May 18th, which is the day they were supposed to walk. Uh, as most of y'all know, I don't know if anybody else has a high school senior, but they've been deprived of a lot of recognition, uh, and a lot of closure in, for their high school year. So this individual wanted to, to organize some kind of parade. Uh, so I contacted her. She didn't, and I told her I was the councilman and to do whatever I could to help. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Yep, we're listening.
Okay. Sounds like someone was in the wind. Uh, so anyway, after discussing with her, we thought it was a, a great idea. we thought it was a, a great idea to have a parade for the high school seniors, have them line up in their cars, you know, they can have however many, you know, up to ten people in their car if they can safely do that, if they've got a van or four or five friends in each car, but they, they line up at the Valana Park, and then have a police escort down Greeno Road and end up at the high school, and there's, there's discussion about maybe getting the faculty to, you know, be in the parking lot, kind of waving them, you know, goodbye, and then, uh, there's even some talk of maybe trying to get a radio to, uh, do a, a live broadcast with messages from the principals to the seniors as they make this final drive. I thought it was a great idea, uh, especially since I have a senior that, that's one of those kids that's been deprived of the, the senior recognition. I think it'd be, uh, something good for the community, you wouldn't be breaking any rules, nobody, you know, everybody being in their cars, there wouldn't be any congregating at the park before, we could have somebody enforcing that, and then they just have one last drive through the high school campus. Uh, so just wanted to throw that out there, I guess the council would have to authorize the police to be able to give the escort, and, uh, so other than that, I'll just open that up for discussion.
And Robert, would people line Greeno Road, uh, uh, practicing social distancing, uh, so that, you know, the, 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 the people on the route can see the people, uh, you know, applauding them or recognizing them as they, as they see fit?
That's right.
Right, you know, and it, it, parents would be one of those lining the, lining the road, you know, there might be a certain section of Greeno where the parents say, hey, let's line up on this, in this area. Uh, you know, business owners, you know, and the, I guess the sooner we get this out, and it's not gonna take a lot of, a lot of prep, but, uh, you know, business owners, I think, would come out and, and, give some recognition to those, uh, community seniors that are graduating. Counselor, what do y'all think? Jay?
I think that's great.
Jimmy?
I, I think it's a great idea.
Kevin?
I have no problem with it, it's a real good idea.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think it's, uh, I think it's a great idea. Uh, I, do we need to, do we need to make a resolution now to, uh, you know, authorize the, the resources to support that parade? Do we need to do that now so that they could start planning it? Uh, we just want to give them a nod that we, we vote on it at the next meeting, or what? We could go ahead and, uh, uh, Robert, if you wanted to make a motion, um, you know, authorizing the mayor to, um, provide, uh, police escorts, um, to support such a, um, senior, uh, parade, um, you know, we, we could do that. And, and, and Robert, do you want to include, uh, seniors from the Catholic High School and Bayside? I know that they wouldn't be going to their school, it'd be one parade, but, I mean, uh, could, could they somehow be included? I don't have a dog, I have pride, I just trying to be inclusive of all the seniors.
No, and I didn't, uh, I didn't talk to that, the lady that's trying to organize it, I didn't talk to her, that, that did cross my mind after I got the phone, you know, to make this more of a community event. They could include the seniors, uh, from the other schools that live in Fairhope.
Right. And then lastly, you're, the, the, the teachers, if they rece, if the teachers and staff receive them at the school, what you're envisioning is they're gonna be spaced out socially distancing, maybe holding a sign congratulatory or waving and, just, you know, cheering them on?
That's right.
All right. Did I, uh, do you want to make a motion to, uh, uh, authorize the mayor to provide the city resources to support such a senior parade? Do you have the date, Robert? Uh, you could put date TBD, you could.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh. It'd be May eighteenth, that's the graduation date. Let's just, let me just get back with her and, uh.
Say, say, you could say date, you could say date TBD if you want in the motion.
No, I know the date's, is the eighteenth, uh, I don't know the time, but let me get with this organizer and see if she has a problem, I don't want to, you know, she's the one that came up with the idea, uh, and, and see if she has an issue with including the other high schools before, uh, we do anything, but I, at least I can go back to her and say we've got support for it.
Well, I mean, I don't know that you have to put that part in the resolution, we just could say we encourage them to invite the others. Uh, because we're just trying to get the resources to have the parade.
All right. I make a motion, uh, to authorize the mayor to allocate the necessary police resources to conduct a vehicular parade on May the eighteenth, time to be determined from Valana Park to Fairhope High School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I got Kevin and a couple others who seconded it, any discussion? Okay, uh, hearing no discussion, Lisa, will you, uh, give a roll call vote, please?
Council president?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, thank you, council. Any other items, uh, uh, that need to come before the council concerning, uh, anything related to, uh, the pandemic?
Jack, I've got one more.
Go ahead, what's that?
Yep, I got, I've got one more, uh, thought, and I don't, you know, I don't think any action, I guess it could turn into a motion, uh, if everybody kind of agreed. I'm a little disappointed in the governor's, uh, latest, you know, safer at home action, and how it didn't loosen the, uh, restrictions on local restaurants. Uh, I, I was hoping that she would have followed her task force that she formed, her recommendation for opening those restaurants immediately, and follow the safe distancing, you know, where it's half capacity, just like, uh, the retail did. Uh, but however, she didn't take that, I know she's getting pressure from the restaurant association, uh, I didn't know from the rest of the council, so what, what's their take on that?
Uh, who else, is anybody, uh, Jay, thoughts, or?
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I expected it to be opened up a little more, um, and, and from what I heard from, the pre, part of the press conference I watched is that, you know, the number, in order to do a lot of these things that they wanted to do, you had to have a, a steady decrease in the numbers, and we just didn't have that yet, which was the reason they didn't allow everything to reopen. Um, I, I was disappointed in it as well, not for myself, but for the restaurant owners, and, and not, not to mention the barbers and salons and all those things, but, I don't know that there's anything we can do in response to that, if it's a state, if it's a state order.
So, Robert, you said action, the only action that the council could take on that would be just, uh, to, 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 to draft the letter urging the, uh, the, uh, governor to, open them up, I mean, that's, that's the only action, obviously we can't take action, that would affect the opening, but we could, we could, we could take action to send a message, is the only action we could take. Uh, Jimmy?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I guess I'm there with, with that on y'all, uh, I, I think that, you know, especially if they can maintain safe social distancing and, and if they had outdoor seating, I mean, that would be, um, that'd be good to me, but, yeah, again, like you said, we, we can't really affect it other than just taking a position, so.
Kevin?
I agree with Robert a hundred percent, we did need to send the letter or do something to try to get this whole town open, to get the businesses running again, and as safely as possible, I mean, you can open up a restaurant, I feel, use every other table, at least have the restaurant open for people to, uh, help the businesses out. Yeah, I'm all for sending a letter to the mayor, to the governor.
Okay, I have some, I could go along with the majority, I have some mixed emotions, I mean, I don't know what that magic number is, if you send a letter, if you say, you know, fifty percent occupancy, yeah.
Jack, yeah, sorry to interrupt, you know, the, the form of this meeting, I, I would just say, uh, the council, if, if everybody agrees, or, you know, just do the vote, but send a letter to the governor saying that we, uh, endorse the task force recommendations for opening all of small businesses.
Okay, are you in agreement with all of their recommendations?
Yes, I have no problem with any of it. If you just want to. I guess I could. You could do that, but.
I can, uh, I can, I can call for, I can call for a motion to, uh, send a letter to the governor urging to accept the task force recommendations. I, I don't hear a motion.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I'll make the motion, Kevin makes the motion.
I'll second.
I, I have a, a motion and a second discussion, did I hear Jay?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I, I mean, I don't have those recommendations in front of me right here, and without being able to see what all of them are, I, I, I don't know that I can say blanketly that I support every single one of them without having, had the opportunity to look at them.
Could you, uh, if, if it was amended since, since Robert brought up just restaurants, could you say, uh, you know, just, just trying to look for some, uh, consensus here, would you be more comfortable if he? Yeah, hang, yeah, hang on.
Yeah.
Could you, would you be? Hang on, hang on a second. Jay, Jay, would you be more comfortable if that was amended to say in regards to restaurants?
I would.
Okay, go ahead, Robert, now you, go ahead.
Yes, uh, to me, there again, that, that's kind of gets back to what the governor did, I mean, it's handpicking certain industries, and, and I'd certainly don't want to leave out the, the salons, I mean, I, I talked to several people this morning in my run group who, you know, have salon owners coming to their house, I mean, and, they're like, you know, there's only one person in the salon at a time, so at the same time, understand, we might not, and I don't know what all their guidelines are, but I'm gonna trust the task for, task force that she put together certainly doesn't have anything to go put anybody at risk, uh, was my only reason for, for saying that, so, I don't want, I don't want to.
I understand.
Best thought, that's just gonna, that's gonna leave other people out that are unattended.
Yeah, I, I don't want to leave oth, other people out too, but I, I kind of, uh, tend to agree with Jay in that unless I have all those recommendations in front of me, there may be others that I may or may not like the way it's written, I don't know. And we, we also, you know, we can also review that and go back to that later if we, you know, want to say that, I'm just, I think that a, a letter that's written when the council is unanimous is a much more powerful letter than one if we wound up having a split vote here.
Well, and, and, and Jack, I mean, I, I, bringing up barbers and salons, I, I've got no issue opening those either, I mean, I think that's, I mean, I think that fits along with restaurants, I'm just, my, my point is, without knowing everything that's in it, I, I don't, I can't say that I agree with it. And so I, I, I'd have no issue making a, you know, or, or seconding a motion or voting for a motion that recommended that we follow the task force guidelines as it relates to barber shops, salons, uh, and, uh, restaurants.
Is there anything that's not open? I think that gyms are still closed, and, and I actually don't disagree, I, 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 I don't know what their recommendations were on that, though. All right, so, Robert, I mean, would you be willing to amend your resolution to say, uh, urge the governor to accept the task force recommendations with regards to, um, restaurants, uh, barber shops and, uh, hair salons?
I'll let somebody else make that motion.
Well, we gotta consider the motion, we, we have a motion on the table in a second, we would be out of order if we did, if we did that, we would, we have to consider this one first. So, if you want to leave that on the table, uh, we're in discussion, and we have a motion in a second, um, I'll just go and say discussion, I'll throw caution to the wind and would probably vote on that, so, uh, just trying not to have a split vote, um. So, without any further discussion, I have a motion in a second, so, all those in favor of Robert's motion, well, Lisa, I'm just doing these roll calls so we, there's no confusion. Lisa, will you call a roll call vote?
Please just to accept all recommendations?
Robert's recommendation, yes.
Council president?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye. Okay. Was that, uh, was that, was that, did I hear one nay, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so motion passes, uh, four to one. All right, is there anything else that we need to discuss?
Um, just, just one thing, uh, go ahead, Jack.
This is Marcus, I got just one question, the governor opened up all public pools, um, and Lakewood is opening theirs up Saturday morning, and the, the mayor, we didn't mention the pool, the city pool, but, uh, the mayor's recommendation had it, had, just said the Fairhope Rec Center opening on the eighteenth, and that's a separate facility or separate building from the Rec Center, from what I consider the Rec Center on the, where the gym and the basketball and everything is, um, was there any thought about opening up the pool earlier?
Yeah, uh, let me, let me, Mark, Marcus, actually, I did address the pools, I did say, uh, I mentioned pools at the very outset, and said that we, that, you know, that we would accept the mayor's recommendations on the pools.
Okay, okay, I just, I didn't, when we went through the resolution, I didn't hear it in there, and we'll leave that in there, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, no, that's okay. No, that's fine, we was, there were a lot of different subjects that I just kind of rattled off at the beginning, that, uh, that was one of them, along with the Nick Center and the museum and, and those facilities.
Okay.
Is there, is there any, anything else? I'm a little afraid to continue with agenda because I think we, you know, we're kind of, you know, we're getting a pretty extended agenda, I don't, I don't know that we need to do that.
Well, the only other thing I wanted to mention is that the library did send out a, um, a plan for opening, and, you know, they're technically, they're a, a city facility, and they have kind of a phased-in, um, plan that they had submitted.
All right, do we need to approve that, uh, Jimmy? That, I, I mean, are they looking for us to a, approve it, or endorse it, or?
Uh, I think so, I mean, yeah, they're, they're a separate, they're a separate board and entity, but it's a city building, a city, I guess, own building, or, funded, uh, I would say, I think I'm good with endorsing what, what they determine to be safe, safe standard, and, and they would phase it in, not having, uh, not having any kind of, uh, programming initially, of course, until later, but they would gradually, um, open to the public, I think on May eighteenth, would basically have it on a limited, uh, occupancy basis, and, and then the next phase would be more people coming in, and the third phase would be no limit plus resuming with programming.
So, Jimmy, do you want to make that in the form of a motion to adopt the library's recommendations, uh, for reopening?
Yes, I'm, I'm making a motion that we adopt, uh, the recommendations that's put forth by the library for their phased-in reopening plan.
I second.
Okay. All right, I, we have a motion, a second, yeah, any further discussion? I just want to say I have read those, and, and I, I agree with them as well. I'm glad you brought that up, Jimmy, that, that is important. Any other discussion? Okay, uh, Lisa, will you, uh, call a roll on a vote, please?
Council president?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Motion carries. All right, any other business? All right, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
I move.
I move.
I did, I heard two motions, did I get a second in there?
Yeah, I got a second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second for adjournment, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Bo, say nay. All right, we're adjourned, hey, thanks everyone, appreciate it.
All right.
Thanks, Jack.
Bye-bye.